Tuesday, August 26, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM. Norma, would you please conduct the roll call?
Mayor Hendrick.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Present.
Councilmember Vazquez.
Present.
Councilmember Connell.
Present.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Stoker is out. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Norma. Pastor Don Belk here today. Pastor? Well, if not, I want to ask Councilman Haney, would you mind leading us in prayer?
I thought I put a piece of candy on there.
I did it on purpose. If you're able, please stand. Short word of prayer.
Apologize, I had a piece of candy, guys. God, we thank you for this day, Father. We thank you for the blessings, Father, over this city, Father, that we remain a city on the hill, Father, that our light shine, Father, from here to everywhere, Father, that you decide, Father, where we should be at. And, God, we thank you for our firemen, our policemen, Father, and all the city employees, Father, and all of our city, Father, for the protection that you give over to everyone, Father. May your protection come down, stay around this city, Father, and protect them from all evil and all harm. And we thank this council, Father, for being here tonight, Father, and we just ask, Father, that all decisions be made through you, Father, and not of ourselves. And we say all of this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Vazquez, if you'd please.
Pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor Texas flag. A pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
All right. No proclamations. How about any citizen comments on non-agenda items?
Yes, we do. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. As your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. In accordance with the open meetings law, the city council cannot respond. However, council can direct the city manager or staff member to contact you. DeBorch Smith?
Good evening. My name is DeBorch Smith, and I'm a citizen of Odessa. And I gave all these guys a copy of this order from our municipal judge, and it still hasn't been corrected. With that being said, I mean, this is the overseeing body of our police department. So I'm bringing it to you guys' attention that I will proceed to the next step on this issue. Mr. Stretcher.
David, have you visited? Under the open meetings, that staff can respond, so just want to... Have you visited with the police department about this issue? It came up at the last council meeting.
Yes, Chief and I visited, I believe, yesterday morning, this morning about it.
Okay. Do you need anything from us?
I think we can, you and I can visit about it maybe tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And discuss it. Yes.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
They'll get with you, okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Ally Bowley?
Clear the clock.
Good evening, council, mayor, city manager, Mr. Stretcher. My name is Ally Bowling. I am a resident of Ponderosa Estates. I live on Ponderosa Boulevard. And I'm coming to you this evening as a parent of three children that attend Compass Academy. I have spent the last probably six months in a vehicle with my stepson, who is learning how to drive. And it has become a very glaring reminder of the fact that, as parents, we're stewards to train our kids on how to drive. And it is a scary place out there. I am, I had always been concerned regarding 56th Street. And back in December, I had a lengthy conversation with Mr. Thompson after I encountered a pothole there. And he eagerly shared the plan of widening 56. I was elated to hear it. I understand the traffic load that is responsible for being ambulatory in between the 338 corridor and Fodry. However, in June, Mr. Tucker came and was proposing a roundabout. And I'll provide this. This is just messaging that I had for the school and then my neighborhood as well. The roundabout very much surprised me that that was something that was being considered, giving the close proximity to a K-12 school. Compass Academy has 1,800 kids this year. And they don't have any after-school care, and they don't have a sibling pickup arrangement anymore. So that produces a significant amount of traffic throughout that corridor, including my neighborhood. And so, number one, it's safety issues for those kids and parents alike. And number two, it is going to make it to where the neighborhood there doesn't really have a right to peaceful habitation. It's going to create a lot of noise and a lot more traffic. I actually learned before I came into this meeting that yesterday, at lunchtime at Compass, you have about 150 kids leaving that are in high school. And there was a pedestrian ninth grader that was hit by a vehicle driven by a sophomore. So safety is, you know, is very important and something that we needed to address. And it was my desire to get the information out to people before time, resources, and obviously finite taxpayer dollars were spent exploring a project that isn't widely accepted or welcomed. So one of my biggest concerns is, is once 56 is widened, it's going to encroach on that dirt setback or easement that's on the north side of Compass Academy. So what that does is, parents like myself, I have kids that are staggered in their release. So I have two, or one that's in elementary, one that's in intermediate, one that's in high school. So that puts me waiting there and for my older kids to be able to come out. Well, when that is widened, it's going to push those parents in the queue into the Ponderosa neighborhood. And then it's going to have, you're going to have children navigating across a five-lane road. And if you have a roundabout with an unpredictable dispersment of traffic, we're going to have even more issues than just a kid getting hit at lunch. So I wanted to share my concerns. I wanted to just advocate for the fact that my neighborhood, we would very much appreciate a well-timed traffic fight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Caesar and Marisol Ramon?
Good afternoon, mayor and councilman of Odessa. Caesar and Marisol Ramon, we are landlords here of two properties on Kelly Street. We have had one for about five years now that we rented out to the housing authority here in Odessa to provide income rental for low-income people. Her concern was that the property next to her was vacant. She had a lot of people going in there that weren't supposed to be there. And we looked into buying that purchase, purchasing that property to rent it out as well. And I took a permit out to remodel it. In the remodeling, there was a big misunderstanding. I did ask about the fencing. And when she asked, when I asked if I needed the permit for the fencing, I told her that I was going to start in the back, you know, and of course, we're remodeling the property. She told me that I didn't need a permit for the back. And I misunderstood and thought that you don't need a permit for fencing, period. So what I did, and I'm still, you know, remodeling, in the process of remodeling this property, I did a fence in the front, not just of that one, but of course, of the other property next to it that I already have. And it was brought to my attention that I didn't have a permit. They told me that I would have to tear it down because not only did I not have a permit, but it runs into the 20 feet right-of-way that the city has on that. I don't make a lot of money off of these properties. I'm just looking to provide a secure place for people to rent. The lady that's there is an elderly, you know, lady. And I, she knows that at any call, we're there to help and to fix. So I do pride myself in keeping these properties, you know, top-notch. And I just wanted to make it pretty for her. She enjoys gardening, you know. I wanted to do something pretty. When she told me that I didn't need a fence, I didn't need a permit if it was going to be on my property line, what I did in the front, I just built a fence off of the, you know, the fence that was already there. Well, not a fence, but on the line that was already there is what I did. And so I just, I came here tonight to plead for a variance to where they don't make me tear it down. This would really, you know, I would take a big hit on this, having to tear it down. I'm not even done creating or finishing building that second fence. You know, this is one of them, and here's the other one. The pictures show I didn't, you know, do more than what was already there. I just, you know, create, did the fence based on what was already there. So tonight, I'm here, you know, pleading for that variance. I have tried to get in contact with several people of the city. I've talked to Maria Prieto. I've talked to Robert Olgin. And I'm just here to plead my case.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ramon.
Thank you.
Dave, who could we direct them to? That'd be, I don't know who.
We can, if you can call City Hall in the morning and ask to speak to the city manager, I can direct you to the appropriate staff, and we'd be glad to try to help you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay. All right, let's move on to our consent agenda. Item number 6. Has anyone had a chance to get the...
With approval.
Their motion to move, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Vazquez. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Let's go to row number seven, our regular agenda. We're going to have a public hearing. We're going to open a public hearing for fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Kaylee.
Thank you so much. Good evening, mayor and council. Today, we are opening up a public hearing for the fiscal year 26 budget. Again, so many thanks to you all and to city managers and to our directors for y'all's collaboration and cooperation in getting us this far. The budget was crafted with four main philosophies in mind. First, the department's fiscal year 25 operating budgets served as a base budget. That was our starting point. All funds, secondly, were expected to maintain at least six months of its respective operating expenditures as a reserve. And number three, there was a focus placed on human capital by way of funding the recommended Gallagher pay corrections as well as continuing to fund the first responder ARPA premium pay. And fourth, our goal, one of our goals was to align the recommended supplemental requests with y'all's vision for what you'd like to see over this next fiscal year. So the proposed budget shows a revenue increase of $40.2 million when comparing to the original current-year budget. We did revise our budget this year to increase our sales tax number. Y'all may remember. So if you compare what we are projecting next year to the revised version of this year, that's a $33 million increase. As you all know, sales tax, property tax, and utility billing revenue represent our largest sources of income for the city as a whole. The proposed budget also has a total of $309.3 million in operating expenditures. This is a 6.7% increase from last year's budgeted operating figures, which I will note did not include vacancies. When you factor the vacancies back in and compare those two numbers, the increase is only 2.5%. So what does that tell us? That tells us that we were successful this year in placing the importance on maintaining operating costs overall, our departments. The largest operating increase that you'll see in the budget this year is in relation to staff and personnel. Lastly, this budget also has approximately $37.6 million in one-time projects and capital expenditures, which were reviewed at a prior work session meeting. So unless you have any questions, I'll step aside for the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, let's open up a public hearing. Everyone's invited to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Three speakers? If not, we're going to close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, let's go to item number nine. Open a public hearing to consider the approval of requests by Tulane Engineering Group, engineer, owner, agent for a zone change from MF-2 multifamily to 2 district to NS, Neighbor Service District on lots 5 and 6, block 97. Elizabeth.
Nope, it's Maria.
Maria, how are you today?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The property involved in this request is located on the southwest corner of North Tom Green Avenue and East 11th Street. The site is within the city limits, and it has a current zoning of multifamily 2 district. This property is currently occupied by a single-story building of about 2,800 square feet. And it also has a 128-square-feet storage building. This property is surrounded by a single-family residential to the northeast, south, and west. The applicant, Hunter Summit and Tulunay Engineering Group owner, are seeking to rezone this property to Neighborhood Services in order to facilitate office use on the property for their engineering group. There are already two areas within this neighborhood which have Neighborhood Services District zoning. One is located to the northeast and is occupied by a daycare. The other location is to the west and is occupied by an office for the Jackson Square Apartments. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties, and the proposed district will not create a conflict to the land uses in the area. Twenty notices were sent, zero denials, zero approvals, and one was returned. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request to Neighborhood Services, subject to the condition indicated. Condition A.
All right, thank you, Maria. Let's open up a public hearing. Everyone wishing to speak may do so at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We have any speakers?
Maria, did you say that you had notices were sent? Now, you got zero responses either way?
Yes, we have zero responses, zero approvals. We had one letter returned to us that was non-receivable. I do want to add that there was a specific use permit for this site, for this building, back in December 15 of 1981 to allow for a fraternal club or lodge. And that's why we have that building there.
Okay, thank you. Seeing those speakers, we'll close the public hearing. Jim, can I entertain a motion on this item?
Let's move.
Motion by Councilman Connell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Haney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you. Move to our, item number 11. Consider establishing a maximum tax rate of .470700 for fiscal year 25-26. Kaylee. Oh, I apologize. I skipped one. Skip one.
Number 10.
Apologize. We're still on number 10. Open a public hearing to consider approval of requests by S.W. Howell for zone change to FD, Future Development District, to LI, Light Industrial District on a 36-acre tract of land located in section 31, block 42. Maria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. The property involved in this request is located on the South Loop 338, approximately 550 feet of, I think it's West Murphy, West Murphy Street. The site is within the city limits and is designated for future development. This property is currently vacant and undeveloped. The applicant is Andrew Mattingly, owner...
Excuse me. I think that was the other map we were looking at.
Okay.
This is the map you was talking about earlier. Yeah, that's the wrong map.
Yes. I think it's the one...
The one that was previous to that.
Yeah.
This is another one for... This is for the earlier one. Some must be for that second case.
Yeah, I couldn't figure that out. Yeah. Yeah. I couldn't figure that out.
Yeah, that's the picture we just previously talked about.
That's the previous.
That's the item nine.
Yeah. Anyway.
Shall I continue?
Over there.
Sergeant at arms.
You got it?
There we go.
That one. Yes.
That's our 36-acre. That's what was confusing. I thought we already did that.
Confusing, wow.
I know, I thought we already did that, Dave. How?
The applicant is Andrew Mattingly, owner of S... Owner, S.W. Howell is the agent. And the purpose of the original zoning request is to create light industrial development in the area. The property is located near a heavy industrial and light industrial zoning, which allows for light industrial and associated uses in this area. This request is not out of line of the city's, Odessa's comprehensive plan. The property is located near a heavy industrial and light industrial zoning, which allows for, like I said, associated uses. The proposed zoning would not have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties and will not create a conflict to the existing land uses in the area. There were two notices sent, zero approvals, zero protests, and zero returned. The owner is proposing to place or relocate an old field trucking company to that location.
All right. Let's open up a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak may do so at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have any speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions? Or if not, I entertain a motion.
Let's move.
Motion by Councilman, is that what? Haney? Motion by Councilman Haney, is there a second?
Second.
Maria, I have one, Councilman Mitchell. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Now, let's go to number 11. Consider establishing a maximum tax rate of .470700 for fiscal year 25-26. Kaylee.
Thank you so much. Okay, so y'all bear with me as I read this verbiage because it's legally mandated. Today, we are considering a resolution establishing a max tax rate of .470700 cents for this upcoming fiscal year. This is per $100 valuation. The proposed rate is .004425 cents higher than the tax rate approved last fiscal year. The proposed rate is .027163 cents higher than the no-new revenue rate of .443537 cents. It is .000001 cents lower than the voter approval rate for this year. So we always adopt a millionth of a penny lower to make sure we don't cross any boundaries. The voter approval rate consists of a 2025 unused increment rate of .013625 cents and a current voter approval rate of .457076. So if y'all remember, the unused increment rate is just the amount that we're allowed to recapture from increases we did not capitalize on in the past. So we are just fully capitalizing on anything that we had in the past. The first vote on the proposed tax rate will occur on September 17. And the second and final vote will occur on September 23, 2025. The tax, the increase impact for property tax owners, we did put some information out there on our socials and in the newspaper on what the impact looked like for the average home value in Ector County, based on Ector County values. So for $193,000 home, that is an annual increase in their property taxes of $8.54 for the city of Odessa portion of their taxes. If you break it down to monthly cost, that is 71 cents. Now, homeowners are going to have different values, of course, that vary. $193 is just the average. We do have a tool, thanks to our Councilman Stoker and our communications team, on our website that does allow citizens to go in, put in their home value, or look up their address, rather, and calculate what that impact is going to be for them.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, any questions?
I think it's time I make the motion.
Okay.
The motion...
Would be the only.
The motion to establish that rate has to be the exact language that she just said. So I think it would be, unless you've got it written in front of you, which I don't think anybody, you could just adopt what she said, and we'd make sure it's in the minutes.
Yes, I'd just make a motion to adopt.
Excuse me, council, we do have a speaker?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oops.
Here's our speaker.
Dallas Kennedy.
Dallas, come from.
Dallas Kennedy, 43 Edinburgh Court. I'd like to thank my representative for trying to cut me off and not allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
No. Never in my life have I ever stood up and said yes to a tax hike. And I don't believe I am now. I believe this is a tax correction, not a hike. If anybody will go back and look at their taxes, last year, it was, I believe, artificially lowered for voting purposes for campaign. But that's beside the point. This is actually lower than the tax rate from 2023. My taxes are going to go up $31 this year, which is like 10 bucks higher than what it was in 2023. So I'm basically washed even. And why are y'all here? Because there were some financial shenanigans going on in this city. We didn't have a budget for, well, I guess we had a budget, but we didn't do an audit for two years? Two years without an audit? Three years without an audit? How is that even possible? Y'all were just making up, I mean, y'all were running on fumes. We gave the firemen a much-needed raise. They very much needed it, but it was used with ARPA funds with no plan on how to pay for that in the future. At the school district, they used their ARPA funds, and they gave out one-time bonuses to everybody. And so the money was gone, and it was good. But the raises were very much needed. But I just ask y'all in the future, when you do things like that, please have a plan. Please set something in place. And don't be using our tax rates for political purposes. Use them because we need to pay these wonderful employees of the city. Y'all have been through a bunch of crap. Y'all have had to clean up. Y'all got a cyber attack right here. Y'all have got one of the best technology guys in the world leading our cyber, our technology division, but he didn't have the support. He didn't have the money to pay for the technology that he needed to keep us from a cyber attack. So yes, I stand up here today. This is not a tax hike. This is a tax correction. I hope the citizens of Odessa recognize that. I hope they look and see they're paying 10 bucks more so that we have firemen that are, that are well-trained and well-paid and ready to be on the job. So, thank you very much for keeping the budget as low as possible and not playing silly, and not wasting all your time on silly social issues and do, using your time to actually focus on the needs of this city and the budget of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dallas.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, councilman.
Make a motion to consider establishing a maximum tax rate of 0.470700 for fiscal year 2025 to 2026.
And adopting.
And adopting.
Her, her, the language required by statute.
The language required by statute.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Not second, what he just said.
Counselman, any? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, number, agenda item 12, discussing, consider all city commissions and board members. Norma?
Yes, for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Councilmember Vazquez would like to have his appointment of Matthew Sparks.
Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I move that Matthew Sparks be my appointee for District 3 Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I would second that for him.
Second by Councilman Thompson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Any opposed? Motion unanimous.
For the Emergency 911 Advisory Board, reappoint Mike Gurkey, Chief Gurkey.
Oh, he's a shady guy. Motion by Councilman Hanes, too.
Second.
Point, Chief Gurkey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Canal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. Next.
For the Odessa Housing Finance Corp., the city council did discuss it at the last work session. Megan Gossett would replace, would be replaced with Mike Withrow. Connie Coons would be replaced with Courtney Ward, and Lance Marker is willing to be, to serve again if council desires.
Would you like to put all that in one motion?
Or do we have to go individually?
All in one for this one board.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second that.
A motion by Councilman Thompson, a second by Councilman Vazquez to replace, basically to put up Mike Withrow, Courtney Ward, and Lance Marker on the Odessa Housing Finance Corp. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous. Okay. All right, agenda item number 13. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.101, the city council will hold an executive session which is closed to the public to discuss the following matters as permitted under the following sections of the Texas Government Code. A, Section 551.072, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property located in Section 3 Block 41, T-3-A-S, comma, A-354 of the TMP R and R Railroad in Midland County, Texas. Deliberation, if an open session would have detrimental effects on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person. Subsection B, as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.089, deliberation regarding security devices or security audits, the city council may adjourn to executive session 2, deliberate 1, security assessments or deployments related to information resources technology, subsection 2, network security information is subscribed by Section 2.059.055, subsection B, Texas Government Code, or subsection 3, the deployment, comma, or specific occasion for implementation, comma, of security personnel, critical infrastructure, or security devices. At this time, I need a motion going to executive session.
I'll move.
A motion by Councilman Vazquez, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman, I think Canal beat you by here. Council's now in executive session at 6:30 PM.
Did your heater trip us off all ago, Mr. Stritch?
Thank you councilman.
That's what it was. Mr. Stritch is here.
It hit the breaker. I appreciate it. It's funny, he's on that wall.
Yeah.
Funny as tiny.
I think I should go to the Arctic Circle this evening.
We got a lot of things we need to talk today and talk about.
You like the rock.
Dustin about it pretty quick.
Oh, you're right.
I mean, he wants us to do all this stuff.
You know, looking out there, it looks like a Texas Rangers game right now.
A Texas Rangers game.
Ready?
Still don't want either Skittle.
Skittle.
Since you got the package before I did.
I saw you looking at it. We're back in the open session at 7:02 PM. No action was taken in executive session. Remove the agenda out of number 14. Remove from the table, consider authorizing the new city manager.
We need a motion to come out of executive session.
We do?
I did it so well without a motion.
Make a motion to come out.
Motion by Councilman Mitchell to come out.
Second.
Saying my Councilman Thompson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
1014. Remove from the table to consider authorizing the city manager text you the purchase of Apollo Alto Prisma software for CDWG cloud security. Is there a motion removed from the table?
So moved.
Let's remove tables or second.
Second.
Say my Councilman Haney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, being motion actually authorized me to do it?
They are good.
Tony?
Hello, so, yeah, we're asking to have be authorized to purchase Apollo Alto Prisma for 124,318.96. Approximately 60,000 will be reoccurring, the rest are one-time setup fee.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Do you have any questions for Tony? Got an entertaining motion to...
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Hayes or second. You asked by Councilman Cornell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you want to hear a motion to adjourn?
I will so move.
Motion by Councilman Vasquez or second.
Second.
Saying my Councilman Haney, all in favor say aye.
Aye.